Are we ready? At this time, we'll call to order the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners for our meeting of Monday, April 27, 2020. Let the record reflect, we have a quorum of all three commissioners. First item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Sheriff, would you lead us?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have several minutes to look over and approve. First is the executive session memoranda of today.
To move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The second is we'll verbally approve the executive session of Friday, last Friday, that we held with Noblesville. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we have minutes of, and I'll go through, take them as a group, April 3, 2020, April 6, 2020, and April 13, 2020. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We have a plat approval, Mr. Lucas.
Flat on the agenda, it's Bureau of State's, it's at 256th Street and Shearer Avenue in Jackson Township.
To move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. That moves us to highway business.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Today, I have no road cut or private traffic control permits. Likewise, I have no bonds for acceptance or release, which brings me to agreements. I'll get these all approved and then bring them up to you at the end for signature. The first agreement is supplemental agreement number two for Bridge 187 between Hamilton County and Beam Longus and Neff. This supplement is the amount of $11,400, bringing the new not-to-exceed to $385,075. It's necessitated because of new utility installations that have happened since the survey was originally done for the project, and now we have to go back and update the survey and the plans to show these utilities. Recommend the board approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next two agreements are both agreements with NDOT, this is for community crossings grants. This is for, the first agreement is for small structure, small structure on Pennington Road. This is in the amount of $260,080. Would recommend the board approve this.
Move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The second is for the matching grant for Promise Road. This is from State Road 32 up to 191st Street. This is also partially Noblesville's. Amount of this one is $307,208.87. Would recommend the board approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, we've got all the numbers and everything else you wanted on the top of that with NDOT.
Okay.
Have our blue pens.
I do, I've got one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Right, and as we do signatures, let's go to Commissioner Dillinger first, so.
We only have one blue pen today.
I have a blue pen.
I have one.
We know who gets the blue pen.
Christine's not getting my blue pen.
I have no acceptance of streets or concurrence of traffic study correspondence. I do have one official action. This is to change the no passing zone log for Promise Road from State Road 32 to 191st Street. This is now making the entire section a no passing zone. So, well, the utility poles along the side, and since the last time we resurfaced this road, traffic has almost tripled, 2011 until the last time we did counts. So, it seems the prudent thing to do, the city of Noblesville wants their, wanted their section striped that way, so, no passing, and then a small section of ours, it just makes sense.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion from the board?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're feeling healthy today, Chris.
Yes. Those are all the items I have for you today.
Brad, do you have anything?
Thank you.
Being with the interested consultants that were interested in the proposal for 146th Street.
Hazeldale.
Hazeldale Parkway, so Jim has revised requirements that we were asking for, and it's, we went over it with all the interesting parties, so everyone should be in agreement with that. So, we're asking for new letters of interest to be due by May 1st with follow-up proposals, then by June 12th. So, right now, we're kind of targeting the last Friday meeting in June for some brief presentations based on what we get back, so.
Right.
Did that process change significantly? There was some discussion about what was requested, et cetera?
Not a huge amount. We reduced some of the requirements, and we're providing them with some templates and some factors that are be common to everybody, so they won't have to try to figure those out.
Oh, okay. Makes sense.
We'll get apples to apples, hopefully, results.
Thanks, Brad.
Thank you, Brad. Well, that could take a while on signature. Our next item is ISSD. It's the Dewberry aerial photography contract. And I'm sorry, Chris, I didn't get a chance to get back with you.
So, that, that's not the aerial photography contract, that's just the QC portion? And so, we did look back at last year's language for the same QC work. That item number four is in there last year, too, and they don't produce any imagery for us, so this, this is.
So, it's just on the QC work, it doesn't control the ownership of the actual orthos?
They are just checking our, our imagery, which we obtained from another vendor, for quality, and all they're providing us is a report of that QC check.
Okay. And as you look at contracts in the future, if there's any, any indication that the vendor is trying to control the ownership of those contracts, it needs to be returned immediately?
But, so we did reach out to them, though, just with that in mind, and they, they said they would take that section out. They do other work outside of just QC and imagery, so they have that in there for other types of work they do. So, we can either wait for that updated contract to come back, or, like I said, we checked last year's, it's the exact same wording as in last year's contract.
As long as it's QC, but I would appreciate the motion that we will control the, the work product of that, you know, according to the updated contract.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
Thank you.
It was exciting, wasn't it, Sean? Next item on the agenda is Buildings and Ground, Mr. Wood.
I don't see him here.
That, surveyor, Kenton Ward. There you are.
He left cellphone and glasses here. Problem solved. I have before you today a easement document that was approved and signed by the Drainage Board at the last month's meeting, the last meeting this month, I should say, and it all got scooped up with everything else and put it in the folder before we could get it to Mr. Howard to get it for your approval today, or at that meeting. And I'd like for you to approve the Steiner easement for the Bear Creek Drain at this point in time.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion on that easement?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Because that's the extra, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yep.
Probably should have just ignored that.
I did, I'm been, I just sent him a text.
Okay, thank you. Emergency management, Mr. Booker. Sorry, I could not make your call this morning.
It's okay. It, it went well. We are continuing to support the state with their testing site. It's a, it, we learned Friday that they were going to be in need of assistance, and I don't think that they would have been successful if we hadn't have helped, but at the same time, we told them we would not let them fail. So, it's gone really well. On Saturday, they had 141 people at the site there at Ivy Tech. Sunday, they had 58. Today, they expect over 50, so that continues. But, the business before you today is to request your consideration to extend the emergency declaration yet for another period of seven days due to our COVID response.
To move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And could you, on the last page, correct my name? It's an E instead of an A at the end.
My apologies.
That's okay, I keep marking it as.
I will ensure that that is corrected the next, the next time.
That's all right.
Shane, explain to me again what they're doing at Ivy Tech. I'm not sure that I understood that whole thing.
So, that's part of the initiative with Fairbanks and IU Health, and they are conducting a study, they're hoping to test up to 5,000 Hoosiers that are within certain demographics. They want to make sure they've got a good broad range of, you know, age and, and other, you know, considerations, but they are doing the, the nasal swab, and they're also drawing blood to test for the antibodies. So, that's the purpose of, of that testing site. It's being led by the State Department of Health with support from the National Guard and State Police, but what we've done to help support them is, they were going to set up just basically a table outside, that wouldn't have worked well for them, you know, when it was raining the other day, but we, we, through the help of the Sheriff's Department and the Health Department, we all came together along with ISS, and we set up our tent and the command truck, and we've been able to provide them with really a pretty nice testing facility. So, that's what's going on currently, and that will run through Wednesday, right now is the plan.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Shane.
So, you're providing, like, an area for them to go in using the command vehicle?
They're actually doing the testing in the tent, and so they've, they've got that set up with, you know, lights and HVAC, so that's a much better, they, apparently, there were some pictures of other sites across the state that was just nothing but a table outside, so that offers a little bit more privacy, and then, you know, things is they need copies or something printed. We've helped them with a lot of logistics, there have been some logistical shortfalls. They didn't have enough needles, they were sent the wrong kind of needles, so, I mean, those kinds of things, we've just been able to provide support, you know, and thanks to Riverview and, and many others for that, just to help them make sure that they're successful.
Like I said before, thank you for picking up on that and sending the folks out there, and Riverview.
You're welcome, thank you.
Doing a great job, Shane.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes.
He's arrived? Mr. Wood, since you've graced us with your presence, we shall take you immediately.
I was just sitting down there. This is just an extension of the contract for the new jail and for the storage barn for a year's worth of service and maintenance, inspections on the equipment.
To move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Anything else for me?
No, just thank you for what you're doing.
Yeah.
And your staff.
Thank you, Steve.
Safety risk management, Mr. Rushforth.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So, I have two items on today's agenda. The first is, as you are already aware from the last meeting, the Taylor Nature Center was hit by lightning on the 28th. So, as part of that well replacement, another item that was damaged was the, the network switchboard. Fortunately, ISS has the capability to replace that. The replacement cost is $5,187.70. Today, I would like to ask authorization to go ahead and.
To move.
Second.
Discussion, and you're working on a lightning rod or something?
Surge, surge protection on there, yes.
Following the, the motion to approve that, I was also going to share that Fredericks has already been out. As part of, they're adding a surge protector as well as a grounding ring that will, it encases the well casing that's been damaged time and time again.
Is there any vehicle damage at all? When you look at the picture there of the building where the tree fell on it, there was a vehicle, it looks like a couple vehicles in there where they're.
So, that's the, the second item that I had.
Yeah, well, I know, but I'm sitting there looking at that, and I'm like, what?
The next petulance, petulance will be up. Wait, 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 all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks.
So, on April 8th, the vehicle shed out at the Parks Admin Building was damaged by a large tree that fell during the ceremony. We requested that Crawford and Company send out a property, a property adjuster to provide a, a claim summary, so essentially, that, that came back as a total loss, so the damages to replace that would be $10,486.63. To answer your question regarding the vehicles, there was four vehicles inside, and I guess we were fortunate from that standpoint because they didn't.
Good, good news.
So, I'm requesting authorization from the board to have them.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye. Thank you, sir.
Wait a second, Steve, while you're here, let's talk about this employee directive on the, on the, under Dan's thing, but he's here, so we might as well talk about it while he's here.
Yeah.
The ordinance will be over here before, in the next.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions about what the recommendation is?
I don't.
No.
No.
Do you feel comfortable you could administer it with those changes?
I do, and I, we've also had the recommendation of Barry, we took back kind of what's outlined in front of you or what was presented, and he agreed with those recommendations versus kind of the route we went before.
Okay, and you got, I don't know if you've had a chance to see, did you see the OSHA
that I sent you? I haven't, I responded to your email. There's really no, that, that article presented as there was significant changes in OSHA standards, it's really a reinforced OSHA standard. Biggest change would come to injury being reportable or recordable or not, because you don't report your common cold or flu, but if a situation presents itself, we're.
Thank you. Okay, and the actual ordinance is under Dan's, correct? Commissioner Committee reports.
I just would like to recognize and thank, you know, our maintenance and custodial staff for all that they've done through this pandemic. They've been incredible for the foresight for Mr. Woods to be able to obtain, you know, gloves, masks, and other cleaning supplies prior to, you know, this COVID-19 event was remarkable, and some of the things that he's done, I mean, they've been on the front line as well, and I just wanted to recognize them for all their efforts.
I remain vigilant on our nine o'clock calls. It's really very informative what EMA puts forth with the group that's assembled. We have, on the COVID issue, attending is Marion County EOC on a routine basis to update us. Ron, written, or with Riverview attends, and, and it's all virtual, but updates us. One thing he pointed out that I wasn't aware of is, a lot of the hospitals, county hospitals have gotten rid of their labs, Riverview has not, and that gives us a huge amount of capability. I mean, it's on small scale, but with respect to first responders and the antigen tests and those types of things that they can do, having that capability within the county, onsite at the county hospital is huge. I just, again, I think it's important we recognize what the hospital's doing, the situation, and how lucky we are to have Riverview Health. And EMA is doing a phenomenal job coordinating. Attorney.
As I told you, I do have an ordinance coming over to amend the testing procedures and the, the people who have to be tested return to work. Mr. Harbrand, I did get through part of this letter from Barnes and Thornburg earlier. I have not gone through all the services, et cetera, but it's $3,000 a month to be terminated at will, so I think there's a, there's really no downside, and with all the COVID funding coming into place.
Well, that was the whole intent of why, you know, I started looking at this, is because we need to maximize the funding that's coming into Hamilton County to address some of these deficiencies, as well as, I know there's a lot of talk about some infrastructure, you know, bills that may be coming that we need to capitalize on if we can, and I know that having somebody, a partner like that, to, to help us and guide us through those channels is going to be very important, so.
Found out during the COVID and the family-friendly and all of those items, our consultant with health insurance.
Oh, Katie Sowers.
Katie Sowers was in bad, but there's no way that somebody local can sit there and disseminate all that information. I think that's exactly what we've got here on some of the funding, and I would recommend it for approval.
Move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I expect the ordinance to be here before you adjourn, so.
Right.
We'll get a motion.
Right, thank you.
Are you through?
Yes.
Director of Administration, Mr. Stevens.
I've taken care of the one item on my list, but Kathy is here to talk to you about the pole situation and get those.
Well, have we done the amendment on that ordinance? I don't believe we have.
That's the ordinance, he's talking about that, will arrive shortly.
Yes.
Okay. Kathy.
The closures, many of our, probably about 12 of our pulling sites were not able to, to move to the June 2nd, so we went through and made the changes, and I believe they have so the ones with the little asterisks is the one that actually have changed. We were pretty fortunate of our 100, we're down to 125 now, but we started with 133, so we really didn't lose that much, so with that, I would ask you to approve.
To move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just have one other little thing to give you.
Great.
Very nice.
Address the issue you talked to me about this morning, Steve.
We talked about it a little bit, if you want to elaborate on it, it's fine, concerning these people staying out in the foyer.
Yeah.
Well, it was not my idea, it was your idea, so.
No, they know it was my idea.
Okay.
And I told them you weren't happy about it, but you weren't unsatisfied either, so.
Okay, I, I just am concerned with them being out there, they're kind of confined when they're in here, but we're more than happy to move if you need your room, but.
I'm fine with really anything.
What, what is your preference?
I'd rather them be in here, because there may come a point where we need in here and out there.
The question is, how difficult is it for you to vacate when we have a meeting?
Pick up tables and go.
So, it's not an issue, and we're not going to meet here that often, but we're going to keep them in here, I mean, is there a problem?
I just want to make it as comfortable as I possibly can for all these people that are coming in here, and I want them to feel safe, and if they feel safe in here, then I, I would prefer to have them in here, so.
Is that the issue, them feeling safe?
Well, plus it's.
The virus, you mean?
Well, there's not, if it's not that big a deal to, how often do we use this room officially? Just let them come in and we'll move them, we have to.
Those white tables, they're light, we can just, everybody pick up tables and move them to the hall, because you probably, I mean, know.
What about, like, when the Drainage Board comes in, Airport Authority and all those?
Airport Authority.
They meet back there.
Virtually.
Virtually. I was going to ask, is the County Council meeting virtually?
I didn't know if you talked about it on the meeting.
They did, they did.
Are they next month, Council going to?
They're meeting here right now.
They are meeting here.
But again, if you don't mind, just moving the tables.
We, yeah, we have marked your meetings and, and the council meetings, and we always move, have always moved out for, for that, but the issue is, when we moved out in the hall, Commissioner Dillinger asked the day if I minded if they all, if they stayed out there. if they all, if they stayed out there. And I just felt like they actually can spread out more in here than they can out there. And I know we did the roping there, but when people go to the restroom, if, if we didn't have that rope, they walked right by them.
Right. I, I don't see any reason why they can't, if it's not a big deal to move in and out, just let them come in here. It's a better use of this facility for right now.
And, and you would probably know a half an hour before you'd have a meeting, right? I mean, at least, so...
Yeah. Well, hopefully, 48 hours if we're kind of following...
No, but I mean, if you had to have a...
You passed 48 hours.
No, stop. If you had an emergency meeting, like you've had in the back room...
Then it'll be probably back in the back room.
But I think that was his concern, because you can't spread out back there.
Yeah, I think...
And I'm just saying...
It gets too crowded. I think it's dangerous for us to do what we do.
I do, too. And that's why I'm saying, we are happy to move, you know. I'm just saying, we probably would need a half-hour notice to get everything...
I think we can accommodate both uses. So is there a motion to allow them to continue?
So moved.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome. This is not, this is difficult. It's our difficult times, so figure out how we make everything work. Alrighty. And that was it, Mr. Stevens? So when are we addressing this? Wait until we get the revised copy. Okay. Okay, well, the sheriff is next on the agenda.
We just have one thing. Ryan, here to present, we're requesting disposal of a truck and a generator.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Before you is just our ongoing request for permission to declare two assets as surplus for the purpose of disposal, the same disposal service that we've used for the last two years that you've authorized, which is thegovdeals.com. One is a pickup truck and one is a generator.
The generator is one that came with the building or just the...
Came from the Health Department. It's not serviceable. They dropped it off a couple months ago.
Okay, okay. It's not a U.AZI asset, not one of the big ones?
Is a big one. It's not one of the EMA big ones.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sheriff, how are you doing at the jail with, with health?
Still no staff and, and no inmates positive. Our jail population is below 250, so we're, we're doing fairly well.
Good.
We are double quarantining everybody when they come in. So they start off on a 14-day quarantine, and then they move to another area for another period of time, and they never mix with the general population, and it seems to be going pretty well.
Perfect. That's amazing.
Good.
Good job. Auditor?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, I have release for bonds and letters of credit.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, I have health trust claims for your approval.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Payroll claims for your approval.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And lastly, I have vendor claims for your approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we're going to go into a work session anyway.
We can go ahead, and for the record, what we're going to present today, it's ordinance 4-27-28. It's an ordinance amending part of 4-20-20A, which you passed a week ago today. Under the terms of that ordinance, we essentially required all but a very few returning employees who have been gone for a COVID-19 reason, tested. Under this ordinance, we are amending Section 10, which was the section that required the testing, to arm with Mr. Rushforth's language as far as cutting down the number and the position and the terms of people who are to be tested upon return, and also giving him discretion to amend the testing requirement. All other terms of the previous ordinance will remain in full force and effect, and it will be, and the ordinance with today's ordinance number will be effective upon passage. And first, we need a motion to approve ordinance 4-27-20A on first reading, suspending...
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now we need a motion to approve the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Any questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This portion of the meeting, we will be going to work session at 2:15 in Conference Room 1A. I don't believe it's necessary to stream that discussion. But the public continues to remain welcome with appropriate spacing. Is there a meeting to suspend the meeting until our work session?
So, second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.